All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the order this meeting of the 21st of May 2020, Nashville City Planning Board. And I guess Linda, can you call the roll?
Sure. So if you're on you, you might want to just take it off of this. Mayor Donches?
Here and by myself, and I can hear you, and I'm social distancing.
Thank you. Mike Pedersen?
Present.
Substitute.
Solo.
Thank you. Scott Leclerc?
Here and by myself.
Adam Barley?
Here and by myself.
Ed Weber?
Here and by myself.
Alderman David Tenza? Alderwoman Jan Schmidt? Dan Hudson?
Present and by myself.
Maggie Harper?
Present and by myself.
Bob Ballinger?
Here and by myself.
And Larry Hirsch?
Here and by myself.
We have a quorum.
Okay, I guess we might as well do the minutes to just get them off the agenda, all right?
By the phone.
I think it would be better if you just waited with everything.
Wait with everything, okay.
I think the best thing to do is just the table at all.
Did I hear something about we should try the phone again before?
Yeah.
Let me try it before we go too much.
Oh, wait, wait, I just actually called her line on her voicemail.
Yeah, so did I, yeah.
That happened, I deleted it out and I'm trying to go back into it, so that's probably what happened.
Don't go back in, don't go back in.
I'm not going back in, I'm just saying I deleted it, that's probably why.
So then Scott?
Yep.
Go into Chris's office and answer the phone if anybody calls.
Yeah, okay.
If we want to do that, I don't know. It didn't work for me.
We'll try it again before we go further.
Yes. Yep, Sarah?
Yeah.
The only thing is it went like directly to voicemail. I can't get through.
Chris's number is working too.
Yeah, no, it goes directly to voicemail, you're right. Let me try it again.
I got Chris Weber's not available.
Right, you got through to her. So I gotta run back to that office.
Yeah, it goes directly to voicemail. Hi Bruce.
Well, I got the, I got the thing as said, not available, not directly to voicemail.
I can try to forward it again.
Why don't we wait a second, I think Sarah's on with the help desk.
Yeah, I'll wait a minute. A little closer.
I was just trying to entertain everybody by doing my golf clubs back there.
We are in a meeting, so we probably shouldn't have too much talk because I probably gonna have to put it on a minute.
It's ringing now on Chris's desk. Hi Scott, it's Linda. Okay, we got through, okay, thanks, bye. It is working, I just called through and Scott was able to answer the line. Excellent, and if it does go to voicemail, Chris, can you be looking at your voicemail that would come through your email? So that if somebody leaves a voicemail, we can call them immediately and guide them?
Yep, I'll do that on my phone.
Thank you, and a huge thanks to Dan and Nick and Bruce in IT for all three jumping on to try and fix this.
All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and move on, so we have in front of us the minutes from the May 7th, 2020 Nashville City Planning Board meeting. Does anybody have a chance to take a look at this? These minutes and want to make a motion as to whether or not they are ready to submit?
I looked at them and they are, I make a motion to accept the minutes.
There were motion to approve the minutes as written by Mr. Weber. Do we have a second on that?
I second it, Larry Hirsch.
Mr. Hirsch, any discussion on that? Linda, can you just call a roll vote?
Mayor Donches?
Yes.
Mike, um, no, Mike's not gonna vote tonight, so Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
And Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, communications? Linda, you wanna just go over what was sent out?
Scott's gonna go over that.
Yeah, hello? Good evening, Planning Board Chair and members of the Planning Board and others present. Yesterday, you received an email from Chris Weber consisting of a memo from Tim Cummings under Other Business Two. Memo from Brad Westgate, Other Business Two. You also received a preliminary plan for redevelopment of the Brownstein Apartments. And earlier today, you were emailed New Business Number Three, two items, Fairgrounds School update. And you were also sent out items for case number one, waiver for parking, which should be added to tonight's Chase Bank application. Updated May 20th, 2020 fire comments and engineering comments under the same date. And additional materials. And number six, a citizens letter for New Business Number Two, thank you.
Okay. Before I read the introductory, Ed, is there anything from the?
HTC, yes.
Yep.
Yeah, HTC met on 18th of May, applicant from 34 Orange Street requested to install a bulkhead door, the one that they had there was really bad condition, and it was passed.
Okay, thanks. I'm gonna go ahead and read the introductory statement at this point, so. All right, so this is Scott Leclerc, I'm the Chair of the City of Nashville Planning Board, and this is the May 21st, 2020 Board Meeting, as Chair of the Board, I find that due to the state emergency declared by Governor Sununu as a result of COVID-19 pandemic, in accordance with the Governor's Emergency Order Number 12 pursuant to Executive Order 2020-04, this public body is authorized to meet electronically, please note there is no physical location to observe and listen temporaneously to this meeting. Authorized to meet electronically pursuant to the Governor's Emergency Order. Are we in accordance with the emergency order, I'm confirming that we are, one, providing public access to meeting by telephone with additional access possibilities by video or other electronic means. We are videoconferencing utilizing WebEx through the city's IT department to this electronic meeting. Public access to the meeting is also provided via WebEx, and a link to the meeting is contained in the meeting agenda available at the city's website. The meeting can be streamed through the city's website at www.nashuanh.gov/318/ctv on Nashville's Community Link, public may also view this meeting on Comcast Channel 16. Two, we're providing public notice of the meeting information for accessing the meeting. We previously gave notice to the public of the necessary information for accessing the meeting through public postings and where applicable, notice to a butters. Instructions have also been provided on the City of Nashville's website at www.nashua.gov publicly noticed at City Hall. Additionally, a link to the public WebEx access to this meeting is contained in the meeting agenda available at the city's website, www.nashuanh.gov. Three, we're providing a mechanism for the public to alert the public body during the meeting if there are problems with access. Anyone has a problem accessing the meeting, please call 603-589-3115, they'll help you connect. Four, we'll adjourn this meeting if public is unable to access the meeting. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. In control of this meeting, and to the extent practical and advisable, the Board will follow the procedures as identified in our bylaws. The applicant will first present the applicant's case, followed by questions by the Board. We will allow for rebuttal period as best as possible for persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition before the Board deliberates and determines an outcome. Applicants and their representatives and individuals required to appear before the Board are appearing remotely and are not required to be physically present. Applicants, their representatives, and individuals required to appear before the Board may contact the Planning Department to arrange alternative means of real-time participation if they are unable to use the WebEx. Real-time public comment can be addressed via video to the Board utilizing the WebEx virtual meeting software for remote access. Please know that all votes will be taken and during this meeting will be done by a roll call vote. We will continue to hold Planning Board meetings electronically until it's been deemed safe to conduct more typical meetings at City Hall. I'd like to thank everybody and the Board and the Planning Department and the city staff for understanding and patience during this difficult time. Okay. So moving on, Old Business Conditional Special Use Permits, there are none. Old Business Subdivision Plans, there are none. Old Business Site Plans, there are none. We move on to the correct thing here. Excuse me, Old Business Site Plans, there's actually one. WS Development JP Morgan Chase Bank applicant. This has application and acceptance of the proposed amendment to tear down the existing building and construct a Chase Bank along with associated site improvements, this property is located at 275 Amer Street. This was previously postponed from the May 7th, 2020 meeting. I think because I have several city members here for items two and three, which are together, I'm gonna recommend the Board that we're, we're gonna hear the items two and three first ahead of number one. So I'm gonna move forward to New Business Conditional Special Use Permit, City of Nashville owner. Application and acceptance of proposed conditional use permit to construct a small addition to the main entrance of Fairgrounds Middle School and associated site improvements, including a curb cut for new access for patient drop-off. This property is located at 27 Cleveland Street. I'm gonna hear that in conjunction with number three, New Business Site Plan, number three. City of Nashville owner, again, application and acceptance of proposed site plan amendment to NR 1828 to construct a small addition to the main entrance of the Fairgrounds Middle School and associated site improvements, including a curb cut for new access. Again, the property is located at 27 Cleveland Street. But I ask the Board first regarding New Business Conditional Special Use Permit Number Two. Anybody got a chance to take a look at that application and want to make a motion as to whether this is ready for us to take jurisdiction?
Sir Claire or Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion, that's ready.
Do you have a motion on New Business Number Two for, to take jurisdiction by Mr. Barley, do you have a second on that?
Second, whatever. Oh, what else?
Second by Ms. Harper. Any further discussion on that item? I get a roll vote on New Business Number Two to take jurisdiction.
Mayor Donches?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, now I entertain a motion regarding New Business Site Plan, Case Number Three, again, City of Nashville. Same site, has anybody had a chance to review this application? Make a motion as to whether it's ready to take jurisdiction?
Weber? Yes.
Okay, so you have a motion to take jurisdiction by Mr. Weber, do we have a second on that?
The Chair, I'll second.
Second by Mr. Barley, any further discussion on that item? Linda, can I just have a quick roll vote on that as well?
Mayor Donches?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
That motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, so we now have New Business Case Number Two and New Business Case Number Three in jurisdiction for the applicant. The city, do we have somebody who wants to speak in behalf of both of those and we can present them together, please?
Hi there, I'm Jamie Willett, I'm the architect, working project manager, architect, working on the, the Fairgrounds Middle School with Harriman Architects and Engineers. Also with me is Frank Crabtree, a civil engineer with Harriman, working on the project as well. I, again, thank you for having us, I do have some slides to show if that's appropriate to kind of walk through the intended scope. Is now this, now the time to share those things?
Yep, we do go ahead and share your screen, yeah.
Sure.
Okay, we've got it.
Great, so what I have here is the existing Fairgrounds Middle School Site Plan. And we're planning to, I guess the overall project is intended to not only make improvements to the site with some, with some nuances that I'll explain in just a moment, but also to improve the inside of the building with some renovations and a small addition at the front which creates a more secure vestibule. The current layout for entering the building allows people, once they get buzzed in, to enter the school without any secure vestibule. And with some, with the small addition, we're, we're creating a space that would allow that secure vestibule to, to interact with the admin before people got let into the building. Currently, this is Cleveland Street here, I presume you can see my mouse, please let me know if you can't.
We can.
Thank you. And, and parents tend to drop off at the, either on the street or they also use this little loop right around here to either go back the other way or go this way. And, and they also use this bus loop to enter the parking area here to get into their spots or teachers and, and parents. This is also a bus loop that shares that same interaction with the parents and teachers coming into the site. And so one thing we're looking to do is improve that interaction, which I'll show shortly. The rest of this is all through parking back through here. And, and the site could use some improvements in some of the paving and parking spaces through this area to help, to help facilitate areas for parking, I know that right now people utilize some, just the side of the road here. And the fire lane carries around the building and has a very steep decline down, back down to the road here. And, and from what we hear from the fire department, it's, it's not traversable by a fire truck, so we're looking to make improvements here so that they have more access around the building and can utilize this, this area. If you've ever driven down here, there's a big, 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 big steep, the truck, back end of the truck would hit that going down there. The, as the bus drops off here and the parents and the students walk here, this is all a, excuse me, concrete plaza and the students enter right here currently. Move on to the new plan unless anybody has any questions on the existing site, or do we do questions as I'm speaking or after?
Generally go through your presentation and then we'll get to questions.
Okay, thank you. All right, so here's the proposed site plan. You can see that there's a curb cut that was described in the introductory piece there, and that curb cut is intended to create a parent drop-off loop and a parking area access as opposed to using the bus loop that is currently used. So in the bus loop, we're gonna do some improvements up here in paving where it's pretty rough. Close in this little bypass area so that deters drivers to come in and do, use that loop, and this will strictly be a bus loop separated from the parent drop-off loop. The parent drop-off loop would enter, come up around, and you can see the two-lane traffic here, and then they would drop off down through here on the, on the plaza area. And so that students entering off the buses and students entering from their parents' vehicles will be on the safe plaza area and be able to enter the new, the new entrance to the building located in a similar spot, but next to the new vestibule, and you'll see a little bit of that on the next slide of how that changes here. We're gonna put some, this is all right now existing concrete, so we'd like to put some, some planting areas with some vegetation throughout here to help improve the front sight of the building or visuals from the street. The parking spaces are relatively the same count in this area, but we have added some additional parking spaces back here to help and change the orientation of these parking spaces to help deter people from kind of blocking this, this road that exists now. Additionally, we repaving back here and adding some, some, changing the grade through here so there's a better, better slope and approach either out of or into the site of that steep area. What you're noticing right in this area is portable classrooms, these are intended to be temporary during the construction process which is approximately just about a year. So these would be here for only the school year next year during the time that the construction needs that swing space as they work on rooms inside the building. They have to close those rooms and change some of those spaces out here for those, those students that, that lost their room during the next school season. Frank, did I miss anything on this that you think we should call out?
No, I think you've covered very well.
Okay, I'm gonna jump to the next slide here, which is the elevation, so real, real small glimpse, this is, this is kind of flipped from what we were seeing in that last view. But here's the new addition, and here's the entrance I pointed out several times on the, when I was looking at the site plan. So right now it's over just a little bit because of the bathrooms are split around the entrance, and, and we're proposing to bring the entrance to one side, push the bathrooms together. And you see here, you get that secure vestibule that I referred to earlier. This addition helps with some of the admin spaces that get displaced by creating these areas. So I'll zoom in a little bit if I can. So this portion right here is the new admin addition that I spoke out, spoke of. Here's the entrance to the building through the secure vestibule, and this is just a side small addition at this bathroom area. The new entrance has a canopy over it with some aluminum face canopy facing. The brick here is intended to match very closely, not quite in exact, they don't make that brick anymore, but it's really, really close to the existing brick. And it has a little bit of features where we propose to add some reveals with a, with a flash to brick to give it some, some interest. And then on the opposite side, there's a secondary entrance which exists currently. The existing roof is, is, is built across here, but this interferes with that, so we propose to recreate this canopy here on this end. And then some new, some new signage, improved signage over on the gym that's currently there now. And this is the existing gym that, right here. I think that covers the, the elevation portion of that. Okay, so that's, I think that summarizes my presentation from what I was going to share. Do I stop sharing?
Yeah, maybe you can talk about, so can you be specific about the need for the conditional use permit? And then also with regard to the site plan, there's, I see, looks like one, two, three, four, five waivers being requested, can you go through those?
I don't have them off the top of my head, Frank, do you have those right there?
No, I don't, I don't have the waivers.
Okay, well I can read them back to you if you want, you can explain to me, but can you, can you talk about the need for the conditional use permit? Like what's driving that?
Frank, do you know that answer?
I don't know that, no.
I have to apologize, one of our engineers has been working diligently on this project, is, is, is not present today, he, he actually had a situation where he couldn't actually join today.
Okay, well Linda, you, can you explain it to me, yeah?
Yes, the reason for the conditional use permit is schools are allowed in every zone, but they do require a conditional use permit. Typically, we see that with every single school that, that's coming in. And this is in an R9 zone, so that's why they submitted the conditional use permit letter.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, so the first waiver you've asked for is a waiver 190-279, which is requires the site plans reproduced on 22 by 34 format. It looks like you're looking for a waiver just on the size of the plans, is that?
Yes, yeah, the size of the sheet I think is a 3648.
Larger.
Yeah.
The second waiver you've asked for is 190-209A1, which is requires curb cuts for two-way traffic to be a minimum of 24 feet. So you explain why the current curb cut?
Yeah, I believe what Sam had intended was because there's a, this is the legacy playground here and trying to preserve some trees, I believe the reason was to, to, you know, avoid creating a bigger curb cut there for those reasons and avoidance of those spaces. He may have some additional reasons, but, and I think he also responded in the narrative, I believe. Linda, maybe, I don't know if you have some information on that beyond what I'm stating there, but.
Yep, the reason why he has in the waiver letter is because of, to reduce the conflict to reduce the risk of the conflict with potential parked cars, that's why they're proposing that the entrance be 20 instead of 24.
Through this area here, yeah.
Through there, okay. All right, then there's a request for waiver 190-128, which is, requires maximum parking standards for the site. So is this over the number of parking, is that the?
Yeah, I think it's around, it's, we're proposing, I think, around 30, it's 30, 34 more than was currently, or is, is allowed on the site by, by the rules. And some of that is because, you know, just the, although there, you know, that it seems like there'd be enough parking, they end up parking in the path of, during some events, not all the time, but during events and whatnot, they end up parking in the path of travel here, so we proposed adding a few additional spaces to accommodate that, those kind of flux times.
Okay. So we got a request for waiver 190-184D1, which requires parking aisles not contain more than 10 spaces in a row without a planted median or aisle. It looks like that center section there has got how many spaces across?
It looks like 11, actually, I read the 22 there, I think it was 11 across.
Okay.
And there's, yeah, the ones with the cross aisles, yeah. Yeah, I think the reason is just to, you know, max, try to, to help increase some of the flows of the traffic through here by maximizing the queuing lanes for, for parents dropping off, but also providing enough parking spaces in addition to that, and then utilizing it to give the maximum queuing as well as drop-off spaces to accommodate those, those needs.
The last one requested is 190-279EE, which requires showing existing conditions on and off-site. So typically that's within a distance or something, but.
Yeah, I think part of that, as I, as I hear it from Sam, is our survey for the, the, the school property actually extends to the left here, and there's fields, baseball fields and tracks. But our survey that we received from the surveyor really just focused on the specific area that we were doing work. We don't intend to do any work outside of the zone that's shown on this plan.
Okay, all right. So those are my immediate questions, I'd. I'd maybe take any from the board at this point. Yeah, maybe if you stop sharing for a minute, we can bring it back up because I can see the board members better, yeah.
Okay, yeah, let me stop sharing.
Yeah.
How's that?
Yep, thank you. So anybody from the board have a question for the applicant?
Weber?
Mr. Weber?
Couple of questions. You have some, you're showing two dumpster, new, two new dumpster locations, but yet you have a clothing repository in the front. Is that going to be gone or is that going to be enclosed?
You mean like a clothing donation box, is that?
Yes, yes.
I don't recall that in the front of the building.
It's actually off to the right hand side as you come up. Go into the parking lot, it's just before the fields on the right hand side. It's, uh, let's see.
Does that illustrate our existing documents?
Nope, it's clothing and shoes.
Sean Smith wants, Sean, if you want to unmute, you can, if you've got a comment regarding that, you can go ahead.
Help C is the company name.
Okay, Sean?
Yeah, the, I'm aware that there's an ordinance, I believe, in the city that you have any sort of depository like this, that it's either fenced in or not visible from the main roadway. Unfortunately, these things seem to pop up. I just saw it for the first time a couple of weeks ago when I was looking around on the site. So I will, as I've done in the past, speak with the principal who undoubtedly has the name of the organization, put it there and will direct that they either fence it in or move it to the back of the school where nobody else can see it.
Yeah, no matter where it's supposed, if it's visible to the public, it needs to be, and even students walking around is in the public eye. They are actually at almost all, excuse me, all the schools in the city of Nashville right now. I mean, they they are good, they're, I'm not saying that, but they are visible. And if someone wanted to, if that person wanted to have a sign or something directing them to the back of the, it would be better in the back. And but it still needs to be fenced in. We've had a number of other things in the city and we're trying to kind of get a handle on this, get these things straightened out. I went down that also, that fire lane, I went down that fire lane, that was on my, I didn't see it on that you're going to negate that, which is really important, but thank you.
Yeah, it is, yeah, it's an ongoing battle trying to keep these things from popping up, so. But I'll certainly talk to the principal or who else, whoever else, and get that removed.
If you could talk to the school board, it's all over the place. They're at the other locations too.
Okay.
Other questions from the board or it looks like Alderman Dowd, did you have a, go ahead, you comment?
Yeah, I just want to say that whatever the city would like us to do relative to that box, that we will comply on this school as it's part of the the middle school building project. So we will comply with whatever the city wants to do in that regard. And and the road is is being completely rebuilt with a new foundation because it is in bad shape.
Okay, great, thanks. Other questions of the applicant from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chair, so Mr. Ballinger?
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you. I just wanted to ask the applicant if the Fire Department had had granted any letter of support or given a comment regarding the 20 foot driveway aisle that is proposed. That's that's smaller than a lot of residential driveways. I just wanted to know if they'd received any firm comments on that from either fire or engineering. And the second question I had is I'd never want to see somebody oversign a site, but given the intended drop off pattern, is there going to be any additional supplemental signage that's required to to get that sort of a counterclockwise flow that's intended for the drop off area? And I guess my my last question, Mr. Chair, would be, how long do they see the portable classrooms being necessary and have administrative staff, whether it be the principal or Board of Education, signed off on the fact that you're going to be putting students into, you know, temporary classrooms? Thank you.
All right, anybody from the applicant, and I'll just remind you, go ahead and state your name and address for the record too, until you start.
Good night.
I got the Alderman Dowd here first, firsthand.
Yeah, I'll start with the last question. We, the authority over the building project is with the Joint Special School Building Committee, I'm the chairman of that committee. There are five Aldermen and five Board of Ed members. And given that this is a bonded project, we will have authority over the, we had, and Jamie can talk to it more, but we have been interfacing with the Fire Department and they have asked us to do a 16 foot road in the back because that allows them to use their their ladder trucks if they necessary. And Jamie can explain more. But the, what was the, what was the last, the other question?
Length of time on the portables, I think you mentioned it was one season, but, you know.
We're going to mandate that the portables be there no more than one year. So they will be moved. They're only for the temporary use of while we're doing construction. Unlike other schools that have, they've left, been left there, we're doing this project to get rid of all portables. So Jamie, do you want to add anything?
Go ahead, Jamie.
Yes, Jamie, on with Herman again.
Go ahead.
So the the fire road access has been, a comment did come back from the Fire Marshal that they'd like to see initially, they they started with a 20 foot lane. And there was discussions, actually Sean Smith and and Adam had, the Fire Marshal had been emailing back and forth and came into a compromise that would work for them for the both parties at 16 feet. And I believe Alderman Dowd is going to bring that back to the JSSBC to get approved to to move ahead with that 16 foot width. As Alderman Dowd said, the portables are intended to stay for just the next school season, which would be the 2020 to 21 school year and and be removed during the summer. And he's going to bring that back to the board to to kind of mandate that as as the max time. And then the other question I think you had was directional, and I believe you're referring to like site directional on the site as a, as far as where a car should be driving for the drop off loop, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Mr. Willett, that is correct. And and actually, my apologies if my question was misunderstood if I didn't or if I didn't state it clearly. My question with regard to roadway width actually had to do with one of your rate waiver requests. I'm talking about the the new, the the new driveway, basically. It's 20 foot width, you're requesting a waiver on that. That's the one that I wanted to know if fire had chimed in on. I understand there are emergency access needs around the rear of the site, but you're proposing a 20 foot throat width for the new entrance. And I just wanted to make sure that you had received some concurrence from, from some authority that 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 would be sufficient, so.
Yeah, I I guess not, not, the comment didn't specifically come up from the Fire Marshal. They have reviewed the set and that's why we kind of were talking about that back fire lane, that was, that was one of, that was their only comment that we did receive from them, at least at this time. So 20 feet, our understanding is is a a comfortable width, 16 feet is the width they need for the cleats that come down on their bigger truck. So 16 feet is what they're comfortable with as a as a minimum for a road width. And then 20 feet is kind of, it kind of helps with with navigating around corners. So specific to the access drive, we have not received any comments that they disapproved of that. It does meet their their requirements for travel way as far as 20 feet width goes.
Okay, thank, thank you for that, Mr. Willett. Were there any comments from engineering staff with regard to the the 20 foot throat width for the for the new entrance?
I don't recall any, and other than maybe that's why we are getting the variance for, I don't recall any specific. I don't know if anybody's on here could, could, you know, state that yes, there was or no, there wasn't, but I don't recall any.
No, I don't think there were any.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Frank.
Thank you.
And on the, yeah, on the question about signage.
Can you just go ahead and just state your name and address for the record?
Frank, Frank Crabtree from Turner, Maine, and working with Herrmann Associates. I'm a civil engineer. Yeah, typically we'll we'll add signage and both painted on the ground and also post signs for these, you know, can be fairly confusing. So we plan to add some more than was shown on this original drawing that you have to direct the traffic, make sure they know what one way accesses are.
Thank you, thank you to the applicants and thank you, Mr. Chair. No further questions.
All right, is it, Mr. Weber, I see your hand up. You gotta unmute yourself, please.
Silly me. Okay, the signage on the ground, the arrows, because it's high traffic, will these arrows be thermal?
That wasn't, that wasn't the intent initially, but that could be done if that was something that was desired.
Well, just it's cost factor, I know it's more expensive upfront, but to the city, once they're done, that will last so much longer and it won't have to be painted and, you know, I think it's directional signs just for the cars. I don't think that buses or anything like that is going to be a big, it's the cars that are going to go in this loop that are going to be wearing that down. And that's a cost factor for the city not to have to repaint. I don't know what the cost factor difference is, but that's something to consider, not it's something that you got to do, just something.
Okay, yeah, that makes sense. We'll take that, look at that.
Any other questions by the board of the applicant? I'm not seeing anybody waving or or yelling on the screen here. So I guess at this point I would entertain if there are any folks listening in on the WebEx or either by phone or or directly on WebEx that would like to speak in opposition or concern to the plan or may have a question. Go ahead and speak up now. Look like there's too many people actually on, so.
I don't see anybody with their hand raised on the WebEx.
I don't either, okay. And then I'll just put out, is there anybody wishing to speak in in favor of the plan? And not hearing anything nor seeing any hands up. At this point, I'd say to the board, any final questions during the hearing of either staff or the applicant? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing on new business number two and new business number three. Move into the meeting. So we have in front of us, so the conditional use permit, we got the explanation from Linda that's pretty straightforward regarding just any kind of school construction in the residential R9 zone. The applicant has presented their, what seems to be a reasonable site plan and pretty minor addition as far as I'm concerned, and I don't have any issues with any of the waivers that have been requested. I'm willing to listen to any comments from the board at this time. Mr. Weber?
Yes, thank you. Dates, eight on number eight, number 11, number 12, 13.
This is a question for staff, whether the dates on the package are all accurate?
Let me take a look. The only one that should be changed would be number 13. We received an updated email from Heidi Peak that was sent out today, and it would be changed to May 16th, otherwise everything else would be the same.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Mr. Hudson, did you have a question? I saw your hand up. Wait, unmute, yep?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to note that engineering had a number of comments and those, I believe, have been suitably addressed. The senior traffic engineer did note some, you know, potential concerns with the congestion and drop offs versus parking, you know, that causes some congestion, but as the applicant responded, they don't have the luxury of a of a of a new site to work with here. So we we believe they're making the best of the situation as they can. So I believe they've addressed all our, all of our comments.
Okay, thanks. Other questions or comments by the board within the meeting? Seeing none, would anybody like to make a motion? And I would recommend we start with new business number due to the conditional use conditional use permit.
Weber?
Go ahead, Mr. Weber.
New business number two, conditional use permit, 27 Cleveland Street, Fairgrounds Middle School, no staff stipulations. It does meet NRO section 190, 133F.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Weber to approve new business number two, the conditional use permit with no stipulations. We have a second on that.
Second, second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion? Can I get a roll vote on that, Linda?
Mayor Donches?
Uh, might be muted, maybe?
Mayor Donches, you done mute? We'll go back and Scott looks there?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
Uh, Mayor Donches?
I'll see him at the moment, so maybe.
I saw him briefly.
Just popped up, yeah, it looked like his screen was frozen.
Oh, is he? Okay.
All right, well, that motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, so we'll keep it at seven zero. Regarding new business number three, have a motion on that? Oh, that's Mayor Donches. Do you want to make a motion on new business number three?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Varley?
I would make a motion to approve new business number three, finding that does meet the requirements outlined in site plan NRO section 190-146D with a total of 15 stipulations. And first five stipulations being waiver requests, stipulation one being a waiver request for from one, section 190-279, reading that it will will be grant, is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number two being a waiver request from section 190-209A1, reading is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number three being a waiver request of section 190-198, reading is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number four being a waiver request of section 190-184D1, reading is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number five being a waiver request of section 190-279EE. 279EE, reading is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Um, then stipulations six through 12, reading is written in the staff report. Stipulation number 13, um, reading is written in the staff report, except that the date should be changed to May 16th, 2020. And then stipulations 14 and 15 is written in the staff report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Varley. So we have a motion to accept, uh, or approve, I should say, new business, uh, case number three site plan with the 15 stipulations as stated by Mr. Varley. Do we have a second on that?
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion? Can I get a roll vote on that?
Mayor Donches?
Yes.
Scott Leclaire?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
And Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, that motion passes as well. All right, thank you to the applicants and, uh, all their staff, um, on that item. Those two items. Okay, so.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I'm gonna go ahead and move on to old business site plan. This is case number one. Again, this is WS Development Owner JP Morgan Chase Bank applicant. This is an application and acceptance for a proposed site plan amendment to tear down the existing building and construct a Chase Bank along with associated site improvements. This property is located at 275 Amherst Street. This was postponed from the May 7th, 2020 meeting. Um, so I don't, we never took this into jurisdiction, right? This has just been postponed?
Correct.
Correct, okay. Did not take jurisdiction.
All right, so at this point, I would ask, has anybody from the board had a chance to review the, uh, application and want to make a motion as to whether we can, can take jurisdiction?
Move to take jurisdiction, Weber?
We have a motion by Mr. Weber to take jurisdiction. Do we have a second on it? Second by Mr. Varley. Um, any discussion on that?
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just, just a general comment. We, we seem to get a lot of late documentation on this case, uh, considering it got tabled from our last meeting. Um, I think there was even a new waiver request today with regard to parking stall length.
Yeah.
I just, I just personally feel that the applicant had enough time to not, not dump documents, uh, the day of the meeting or a day before the meeting. Um, and I'll, I'll, that's, that's my only comment. I have no problem accepting jurisdiction, but, uh, it puts us at a little, at least me, I'll speak for myself, uh, at a little bit of a disadvantage when you're receiving, you know, uh, documents this late in the game. So, uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the time.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, can we get a roll vote on the jurisdiction?
Mayor Donches?
Yes.
Scott Leclaire?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion carries eight to zero.
Okay, so do we have somebody from the applicant who, uh, wants to speak on behalf of this, uh, application?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, I can.
Yes. Um, good evening, folks. Alan Roscoe, uh, I'm a senior project manager with Four States Group. Uh, we are architects and engineers, uh, and consultants to Chase Bank on this project. Um, so if, if everybody can hear me, I'll, I'll go into a brief summary and, uh, apologize if I, if you heard me earlier when you were setting up. Um, at least we all had a good laugh at my expense. But, um, got with me tonight, uh, for the purpose of introduction, um, on a separate line, I have, um, our lead architect. Her name is Caitlin Flynn, uh, in case there are any questions or comments directed towards the architecture, if there are any, um, she's available. Um, but again, thanks for the opportunity. Um, yeah, we did have to, uh, continue, um, our hearing last time, so I would like to brief you folks on, on our project, uh, and, and apologize to, uh, Mr. Ballinger. Um, uh, we received comments on Monday from the fire marshal, and, uh, so we were reacting to those comments, which is why some of the materials have come in so late. But, um, you know, we do try to, uh, address these items as they come up. And, um, so, you know, apologies if he feels put out, but, um, we were reacting to those comments. So anyway, um, i- if you don't mind, I'll share my screen.
Go ahead, yep.
Okay. So there we go. All right, so this, uh, is the best drawing to look at.
Okay.
Um, of the drawing set, we've got a fully, fully developed site plan with details and, and the likes, but I think the meat and potatoes of what we're showing you appears on this drawing. So, um, this is the former location of the Ruby Tuesdays. Uh, we're proposing a teardown rebuild of, of the facility and to redesign it to serve, uh, a banking use with remote ATMs. Um, these will be all digital. There'll be, uh, no vacuum tubes. They're completely standalone. Um, and those are allowed by right in this zoning district. Um, so I think the first thing you notice is that we are, uh, pretty well overparked here for this use. Um, but there is a lease agreement with the landlord that we provide a certain number of parking spaces. So that's why the, you know, the overall parking layout is designed in this way. You know, we probably have enough parking over in this area to serve, you know, the customers that want to walk in. Um, but we also had to provide suitable parking to meet the overall parking count for the plaza. So, uh, that is why, you know, most of these additional spaces are, are located on the lease parcel. Um, but we've tried to dedicate, you know, a, a drive-through lane in this fashion to direct folks to the ATM. Um, and then there's customer-based walk-in traffic, if you will, that's close to the front door of the bank. Um, the front door is located in this area here, and because it's back-facing, uh, we're asking for a waiver on, um, providing a door that faces the street. So, uh, that is one of the, uh, items that we're requesting relief for. Um, but, uh, generally speaking, you know, this bank use is, is very benign. Um, it is allowed in the district. Um, doesn't require much parking, but again, because of the lease agreement, you know, we have to provide 65 spaces. And, uh, we just recently had to widen the drive aisles to conform to the fire marshal's comments that we received on Monday. So, um, I believe he has now approved of the layout and, uh, despite, you know, just a few remaining loose ends, I think we've got a, a plan that works and, and meets with most of your requirements. Um, but again, it's a benign use. Um, it's a very low user of water. Um, it's a low generator of wastewater. Um, we've done a traffic analysis on a trip generation standpoint, and obviously with a restaurant, you're gonna have a hot, much higher, uh, traffic, uh, use. So there's a reduction in traffic with this proposal, and we're also providing stormwater treatment units to, uh, treat the drainage, um, before it's discharged to the system in and around our project. So there's many beneficial things that will come out of redevelopment, and, um, you know, we're here tonight, um, seeking, um, your approval.
Okay, thanks. So can you just be, can you clarify for me, how many parking spaces are you actually creating for this plan?
Uh, 65 is the number.
And that's the number that your lease agreement requires of you?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay.
All right, so, so we know we're over your, your maximum, but, uh, we've requested a waiver for that as well.
Okay. And it looks like you're asking for a waiver for, um, sort of the, uh, the pervious parking islands, too. There's, have you made an attempt to get those, I mean, since you essentially have more parking than you need, um, you made an attempt to get those into the site plan?
Yes, our initial, yeah, yeah, our initial design, you know, we did have, um, narrower drive aisles. So we had, we had 20 feet wide drive aisles to try and accommodate that landscaping. So you can see we've got, you know, um, islands in between parking rows and, you know, we're trying to maximize where we can. Um, and then when the fire marshal stated that we had to have a 24-foot aisle, um, you know, we had to widen the, uh, parking bays a little bit, um, to pick up that extra footage. Uh, but we did try to compensate for that by requesting this waiver that we just received, you know, yesterday, um, so that the parking space length could be reduced from 20 feet to 18 feet, so that we could preserve the, uh, landscaped islands.
Okay, so then the need for the shorter spaces allows you to keep the island?
Right, if, as long as, because we can consider that there, there might be a, a foot or two overhang over the curb. So, you know, your effective parking space is still close to 20 feet. So, we're trying to meet the intent of the regulation.
All right. Um, thank you. Um, any questions by the board? Can you go ahead and stop sharing for a minute? Well, I'll actually, I'll make up if you can, but it's easier for me to see the, uh, Mr. Varley, I can see you, yep.
Yeah, I just had, and I know you just stopped sharing, but, um, it'd be helpful for everyone to see it. I just had a, a question about if, if you could sort of, um, go into a little bit more detail about how the drive-through will work, particularly the flow and the, and the signage?
Uh, yeah, sure. Um, so you can access the ATMs, um, from anywhere in the parking area, but, you know, we try to separate as much as we can, you know, the drive-through operations from customers who want to walk in. So, you know, if you're gonna walk into the bank branch, you're gonna try to park nearest the front door, right? So you're gonna park in this area and walk through, and that's separate from the primary drive-through lane leading from the plaza into the site. And then it will run in this fashion. There's a drive-through sign in this location directing traffic this way, and there's a bypass lane along with the dedic, the primary, um, ATM line.
And, and is there, it, it's sort of the, the, the top end of the site, we're entering the site and going into what becomes the drive-through lane. Are you, would you have drive-through signage there as well?
Yeah, we have, uh, stop lines and, um, there'll be signage dedicated to, you know, directing you to the drive-through lane, if that's the question.
Yeah, I guess what I'm saying is when you're first entering the site, um, so I understand that you, you have, you have drive-through signage, you know, after that crosswalk, but I'm saying, yeah, when you're first entering the site, is there going to be some indication that you should enter the site in this fashion if you're going to the drive-through?
Yeah, I don't see a sign here, but I, we will add that.
Okay.
It, it's, it's this keynote cue. Um, so we'll just add another sign on this island.
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Other members of the board, questions of the app again?
Weber?
Mr. Weber, go ahead.
A couple of, um, your drive-through, uh, arrow that is closest to your do not enter, you know, the other way, yeah, that arrow?
This one?
Um, can you, would, I, I would bring that, if you bring that arrow closer to the do not air, uh, enter, I think that gives people a more distinct, um, understanding that this is a one-way. But if it's way back in the middle, which people are already gonna come in that and they're not gonna be any other way, where it's at now, it serves, I think it serves less than if it's right down towards where that one do not enter area, it really does tell people, this is a one-way, don't come this way. You understand what I mean?
I do, yeah. Um, because you need the visual cue to, to not go the wrong way back up the drive-through lane. Yeah. Uh, if, if you would like us to relocate that, we will do that.
It's just an idea. That's up to you.
No, it's up to you.
Okay, no, what you have there is gonna work. I'm just saying it's probably better if it's closer to the, uh, do not enter sign. I think it means a lot more for people seeing that. And, and also if, uh, because of the traffic, the amount of traffic going through that, I talked to the last applicant about thermo paint. It's a consideration. It's not what you have to have, but it's a consideration. It won't wear out. Takes a long time for it to wear out. Just a consideration, not necessary. Um, you're, uh, are you gonna be using, how are you gonna be getting rid of your debris? Are you gonna have a dumpster? Or how are you gonna get rid of your stuff that you have?
Yeah, um, banking is a very, uh, light generator of, of trash, especially these days. Everything is electronic. Um, in other banking locations, um, usually, uh, trash is removed on, on almost a daily basis by the cleaning crew. Um, there's very little waste.
Okay, so you're not gonna need a dumpster. There's no need of it because the, the cleaning crew is gonna take everything with them and dispose of it?
That, that is the way, yeah, I'm sorry. I don't mean to.
Yeah, no, no, I understand. So they're not gonna use the dumpster over by Whole Foods?
No, that is not the intent.
Okay, because, um, the Whole Food, I mean, the, um, the person who owns, um, that plaza, uh, when they came before the board, said that they were going to enclose the dumpsters that are there. Uh, so far, those dumpster has not been in, uh, enclosed. And so, um, I would just, um, it's not up to you. It's up to the owner of the, the, um, store, all the other stores. Um, the walkway that's over, that's at from the corner of Chase, it's a, yep. Um, is that curb that's there on both ends, are those dropdown, uh, curbs for handicap?
Uh, yes. Yeah, this is an accessible route. So, yeah, we want to provide it.
I, I, it's just that I can't tell that it's a dropdown. Usually there's a dropdown indicator that it's, you know, it does drop down.
Yeah, it, it, it shows on our grading plan. I, I could call it up if you'd like, but.
No, no.
The, the intent is that, yes, it'll be, uh, accessible.
Okay, no, that's all I need. Thank you.
Other questions from the board?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just, uh, wanted to confirm the, uh, the drive-through, it's, it's ATM only? There's, there's no full-service teller where there's some sort of pneumatic tube setup? It's, am, am I correct in stating that?
Yes, sir, you are. Um, these are totally remote. Um, they're standalone. There's no vacuum tubes. There's no, um, voice activation. It's, you know, your traditional keypad, as if it were mounted to the building, but it's discreet from the building. So there'll be no internal tellers operating. It's unconnected.
Okay, thank you. Uh, uh, quick follow-up, Mr. Chairman?
Good.
With the, uh, i- is that strictly, it, it looks like you have two drive-through lanes. Is that strictly a bypass in case somebody wants to bail, the line is too long, or they wanted another way out? Uh, I, I'm not opposed to a bypass. It just seems like, uh, it's almost 13 feet. It seems like it might be a little more pavement than you would need for a, for a bypass. Could you maybe talk about, um, that additional impervious, um, next to the drive-through?
Yeah, sure. Um, yeah, it is a bypass. Um, can't say that Chase will ever change their mind down the road, but the, the width issue is, is really because of the zigzag maneuver and then the, you know, the hard left to, uh, exit the drive-through lane. So you need that extra width to allow vehicles to make that turn without damaging the curbing or the ATM.
Okay, all right. Thank you, and, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, any other questions from the board? The applicant?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Um, just a quick question. I, um, I, I understand that you can't put any landscaped islands in because of the parking plan, but is there gonna be any green space left after you demolish the other building?
Uh, yes, uh, I'll draw my cursor over where there'll be landscaping, so.
Oh, thank you, because I can't, I can. Thank you, because I can't, I can barely see it.
Oh, okay.
I have bad eyes.
Well, I'll enlarge the view here, so.
Thank you.
The area that is predominantly white here. Okay, you see that?
Yes.
That's, that's landscape.
Okay, great.
This speckled hatch pattern is pavement. Okay, so like this center island, if you will, is 10 feet wide.
And that's all landscaped?
Yes, and then this landscaping between the access driveway to the plaza and then this, this strip of landscaping here. And then similarly on both sides of the drive through lane. And then over towards profile circle, this area here is all landscape as well. So, you know, we've done the best we can, given the parameters and, you know, trying to work with staff.
Sure.
I think we found, you know, at, at least everybody's content. So we get the spaces we want and we get maximum landscaping, so.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Weber.
Go ahead, Mr. Weber.
Okay, I, it was just a comment and Maggie Harper got, got it there first. I'm looking at your LP1 and it's on the landscaping. I'm just going to say that that's one of the things that we really look for is the landscaping when you have a lot of pavement and stuff like that, just to keep it cool and not, the pavement doesn't get extra hot. I noticed all the trees and everything that you're, the landscaping that you are providing. I just wanted to say thank you on that.
Say it loud.
Yeah, it came back on.
Can you, so there's, there's six waivers on here. You've talked about the parking. We talked about the parking island waiver. We've talked about the maximum number of spaces. Can you talk about the other waivers? The first one is the existing conditions. All right, do you have your waivers there? Can you go through those?
Sure, yeah, the, the 1,000 foot existing conditions seems pretty specific. And this is really a redevelopment project. And if this was, you know, a large scale development on vacant land, you know, you might want to have that information. But we are respectfully asking if we could limit the scope of, of our survey work and investigations so that, you know, I think you've got enough information here to act on, on this proposal, but.
Okay.
That's, that's our sense, so we're asking if we could just
Got it?
go along with the information we've provided.
Yeah, there's a, the next one's down there, the waiver 190-215D, certain stormwater loading totals. What's the deal with that one?
Sorry, thought I had them all out here. No, I'm sorry, I don't have that in front of me, but what is the, what is the requirement?
Staff, maybe? Do you have some input on that?
Sure, yeah, the, there's a requirement when you're having already established site that you have to meet certain requirements for the stormwater regulations. And it's certain loading totals. And they're doing a great job of, what do we have, sheet flow now, and they're improving it. But this is the waiver that you need for a certain deviation from that.
Okay, so you guys.
So this is the, this is the stormwater treatment you're talking about?
Right.
Yeah, okay, yes, we are providing a contact unit to provide that treatment, yes.
Okay, but the waiver got is because this, the quantity is, is not reduced enough?
Yes.
All right, and then the request for waiver 190-172D, that's the facade materials. It's, I assume that's because of the corporate branding of the building? Can you maybe explain that? Is that going to be similar to the one that's on Daniel Webster now, the new, the new one?
Yes, we, we did that, that site as well. That was a remodel. That was a Burger King. We kept the building in that case and just refaced it. But yeah, Chase, you know, is a large franchise company. You know, they've got their own ideas about branding, but they are using, you know, finishes that mimic natural materials and, especially here in New Hampshire, with stone looking and wood materials. But Caitlin could speak to that if you have any further information.
Maybe just give it, just a brief, so just the color scheme, we just have black and white here, sir. I don't know if Caitlin, what's, yeah, you're unmuted. Not hearing anything.
Caitlin, are you unmuted?
Yeah, she's definitely unmuted. But I mean, as far as the look and the color scheme, it matches similar to the one on Daniel Webster.
Yeah, it's not exact, and I thought we gave color samples or at least a color rendering.
I think you did, we just sent it up like black and white ones in our packet.
She's on her phone. She's trying to talk, but she can't get through.
Oh, okay.
I'll just try to speak in her voice.
Yeah, that's fine.
But yeah, the intent is to mimic natural materials and native materials here in New Hampshire.
Yeah, and you already talked about the entrance on each street. You just don't, you don't believe there's any need to have a door on that backside. Okay. Any other questions of the applicant from the board? Can we go ahead and stop sharing your screen? Okay, I'm not hearing any. Anybody who is online that is not part of the board of the applicant? Wishing to speak in opposition or concern to the plan, want to speak up? Not hearing any? Anybody wishing to speak in favor of the plan? Again, not hearing any? At this point, I'll give the board the opportunity to ask any last questions while we're in the hearing, staff or the applicant? Okay, not seeing any. Go ahead and close the hearing on this. So move into the meeting. So we have another bank site. Obviously, it's the old Ruby Tuesday development. Nice to see something going there, I think. Looks like the applicant has made a reasonable attempt at, you know, developing green space where they can based on the lease agreement. Do believe that, you know, the parking, the overparking is a little unfortunate, but but I do think maybe the Whole Foods area might bleed into that, frankly, because their parking seems to be kind of full often. So maybe that's not so bad. Anybody else have any comments they want to make during the meeting?
Just of staff, Weber.
Go ahead, Weber.
13, any, and 14, any changes?
Oh, yeah. We need a date anyway.
Actually, you're going to want to add the waiver to 190-193A, requires all parking spaces being 20 feet in length. That's what you received today in the packet.
Got it.
Yeah, number 13.
Okay.
Yeah, May 20th is the date for Joe Mandola comments and 20th is also for fire comments.
Versus the 11th, that should be the 20th?
Correct.
Okay.
That's 5/20.
Correct. And you're recommending number 17 be the waiver of 190-130, 190-193A?
Yes.
All right, any other comments in the meeting here from the board? Yeah, entertain a motion. Somebody? Mr. Varley.
Mr. Chair, I would make a motion to approve old business number one. Finding that it does meet the requirements outlined in site plan NRO section 190-146D with a total of 17 stipulations. Stipulation number one for waiver request of section 190-279EE. That request reading is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation number two being a waiver request for section 190-183-D1. Again, reading is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Number three being a waiver request of section 190-198. Reading is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Four being a waiver of section 190-215-D. Reading is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation five being waiver request of section 191-172D. Reading is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulation six being a waiver request of section 190-172E. Reading is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation. Stipulations seven through 12, reading is written in the staff report. Stipulation number 13, reading is written in the staff report with the addition of the date of May 20th, 2020. Stipulation number 14 being revised, also indicated date of May 20th, 2020. Stipulations 15 and 16 is written in the staff report. And then the addition of a stipulation number 17, which will also be a waiver request of section 190-193A. And that read is granted, will not be contrary to the spirit and intent of the regulation.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Varley. So we have a motion to approve new business or old business at this point, we've got a case number one. And that would be with the 17 stipulations as indicated by Mr. Varley. Do we have a second on that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
We get a second by the mayor? Okay. Any further discussion? Can I get a roll vote on that?
Mayor Donches?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Bob Bollinger?
Abstain.
And Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes seven to zero to one.
Okay, thank you from the applicant. Appreciate it. I'm going to move on to other business now, review of tentative agenda and term proposals of regional impacts. Anybody had a chance to take a look at that? I want to make a motion as to whether there are any proposals of regional impact on the tentative agenda.
Thank you, folks. Good night.
Thanks. Anybody from the board on the tentative agenda?
This is, whoever. No, I looked at it before and I didn't see any, but I was going to do a, there is something that I'd like to have staff look into. It's, and it has, it may have impact on Nashua. Hudson is proposing to take away the cell, green metals to an Amazon distribution unit, and it's going to be a huge, very huge distribution unit, area. It's going to take, if you guys are familiar with green metals, that's a pretty big area and that can have regional impact on us. So just throwing that out there for staff to look into that and see if it meet regional impact on us, not us doing something on them.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Mr. Weber. Are you?
I'm saying on the regional technical, no, there isn't anything impact.
All right, I can take a second on that motion? Buddy? Mr. Varley, any further discussion? Get a roll vote on that?
Mayor Donches?
Yes.
I heard a yes.
Yes. Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Bob Bollinger?
Yes.
And Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, thanks. Next up on the agenda, we have a referral from the Board of Alderman on R-20-028. Authorizing the city in Ashford to enter in a master development agreement with Lansing Melbourne Group LLC. This was tabled from the May 7th, 2020 meeting. At this point, I guess we probably have to untable it to start the discussion. Anybody from the, I think we have some folks to talk on that, right? Correct?
Correct.
Okay. Did I get a motion from the board to pull this up the table?
Mr. Chair.
Take a second on that, anybody?
Second, Weber.
Taken by Mr. Weber. Any further discussion? Can I just get a roll vote quickly on taking it off the table?
Mayor Donches?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Varley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Bob Bollinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, so do we have someone from the city first that wants to talk on this referral?
Yes, Tim Cummings was just here and he was just here on it. You got a memo from him and I think.
He's here, yeah, I can see.
Hilarious, great.
Hello, yes, can you hear me?
Yep.
Great, thank you for the record. My name's Tim Cummings. I'm the Director of Economic Development for, for the city. And I wanted to come before you this evening to just ask for your favorable recommendation of R-20-28. I'm asking for that recommendation to be made without any conditions. The reason why I am asking for this is, is this is not a new issue. This is something that we as, as a city have been working on for quite some time. In fact, you should have received a communication from me, which I won't read, but is a memo that outlines the process that we've taken to date and describes the project in, in detail. But essentially, it's, it's, it's something we started back in 2014 with the passage of a resolution to put out for an RFP, a surplus piece of land, a parking lot on School Street, contains some 84 surface parking spots or something to that effect. And we were looking in to seek development on that site. Issuing the RFP, we had been working with a preferred developer and we negotiated a master development agreement which this current resolution speaks to. And this was not something that just happened overnight. It's been a multi-year negotiation. And I'm proud to say that we finally got to a point where we could present it to, to the Board of Alderman. As I said, this is not a new issue. This is something that I've briefed the Board of Alderman on in the past. I'm relatively confident. I've briefed the planning board in the past on this, on this issue as well. And it, and it is essentially an improvement to our current downtown environment. I did prepare a PowerPoint. I'm not sure if you want me to go through those slides. That was included in, in the packet as well, as, as my understanding is. But essentially, I know the hour is getting long. I know this is not a, a new issue. So I defer to you, Mr. Mr. Chair, how you'd like to handle it, but I'm happy to walk you through the slides. There's about five or 10 of them. And, and I, and it would help orientate the conversation, or, or I'm not sure what your pleasure may be.
Well, I think we've had a copy of it for a little bit. Why don't we, we'll take some questions from the board and and if, if we feel like we need to bring it up to address the questions, maybe that's the. and if, if we feel like we need to bring it up to address the questions, maybe that's the right way to do it. But let me just, let me just summarize. So, you know, my own understanding is you know, obviously we've had the development of that, that lot in front of the planning board several times over the last few years. Is essentially the, the main difference between what we're what being proposed now and what we've sort of seen in the past is just the, the concept of the parking. Is that really the only difference?
And that isn't even actually the main driver. It was always understood that there would be some off-site parking needed. How much was still to be determined. You know, but there was always an understanding that we were going to try to leverage the city parking assets for the advantage of, of this, of this development. And, and I should note that complies with the, with the zoning regulations in the, in the downtown area. So we're just, we're just essentially using the, the land use regulations that are available to, to, to everyone. The, the main difference over the, over the conversation is this development is, was originally thought to be a hotel. That was something that was contemplated early on. The economics of that really didn't work out to the city's favor. It was a tough, it was tough to, to try to, to in this market make the hotel work. So we know that there's, you know, more than ample demand in private sector interest in, in apartments. I think everyone would recognize that Nashua has a housing, an apartment housing need. This is one effort to address that, that concern. And so that is the biggest subsequent change, but the development size is essentially the same. And the footprint would be essentially the same. The usage of the lot is essentially the same. Really, it's the economic benefits that are more palpable to, for, for the city. Mr. Chair, if I may, I just want to kind of lead off on a couple items that I mentioned in my memo that were discussion points because I know, I know that they will come up as issues, so I just want to kind of get them out on the record. Parking, yes, I understand parking is always a concern and people want to, you know, make sure that they have parking provided for them. And, and of course, we as wanting to be good community partners with everyone wants to make sure that they have the, the adequate parking that they may need as well. So we, we, we recognize that. We have more than enough parking in the, in the downtown in various different types of ways, whether it's on-street parking, surface parking lots, or structured parking garages. And that doesn't even count the private sector parking lots that are in our, in our downtown. I, I, I want to go on and just say, you know, I understand this concern about affordability. And, you know, and yes, we need more, we need more affordable housing in the city, no question. I would argue or, or point out that every additional housing unit is an increase in supply and which will help the, the situation. And it will either keep rents from increasing or will keep them from increasing as quickly as, as they may be by introducing this supply. There's no question we need this, we need this housing. I mean, we, we've seen that time and time again after study and after study. The, and I would be remiss not to point out that we as a city prioritize affordable housing. Unlike a lot of places, we recognize the need. We actually make a concerted effort to bring affordable housing through various strategies. I'm proud of the Marshall Street project, which is a rock's throat from this development site. And I'm also would be remiss not to mention that we now know and that there's a potential 160 new affordable units coming in just across the street from this project with the redevelopment of, of a housing authority piece of land that is coming in the works. So, and we are, we are working towards bringing those, that project to fruition. So we know that there is affordability and we, issues and we are looking to proactively address them. Not every single project can be an affordable housing project. This happens to be one of those projects, but nonetheless, it's, it's good for, it's good for the community overall. I, I would want to just also finally point out the need for economic investment in the downtown. Our downtown is a wonderful Main Street and we need to continue to enhance that Main Street. It has a lot of challenges as many downtown Main Streets do. Introducing housing into the downtown is one of the best things that we can do. It is something that we, we are lacking in, in, in the downtown. We don't have a true mixed-use environment in our downtown. Unlike other areas of, of, of New England and across the country. So this is a use that is needed to help improve the downtown. We recognize that. That's one of the reasons why we've been focusing over the years on introducing residential development in the downtown area. Lost 34, the Riverside Landing, Marshall Street. Those are, those are just some examples of what we've done over the years to help bring about a mixed-use environment. And, and it's working. You know, we are seeing a healthy downtown, but we need to continue working on it. And, and this positive economic investment will just bring about additional investment. I would be remiss also not to point out that now more than ever, you know, due to COVID-19 and, and whatnot, independent small businesses on the Main Street that are service-based are are, are being challenged like they've never been challenged before. And if we, if we can bring any type of positive economic impact and influence of the market in, in such a way, it will help. This is, you know, one of the first ground-up constructions in, in decades. And that's something that the city should be proud of and something that, you know, I'm, I'm pleased to, to be recommending to, to you. You know, we've seen projects typically conversions. But to actually have the private sector market do a ground-up construction, you know, is a whole new level of, of type of construction cost and, and whatnot. So it's another sign that our market is strengthening, which is, which is really ultimately what we want. I'll conclude my comments just by pointing out as to why this area as opposed to other areas. Smart Growth Development points out that, you know, we don't want to build on greenfields. We want to build in places where you have the infrastructure already outweighed. We've made the capital investments and you want to concentrate your development activity on, on a footprint that can handle it. This piece of land is the exact type of footprint you would be thinking of when you think about smart growth principles. And so, you know, we should be trying to work towards this type of, this type of development. You often don't see this type of development because it's more challenging, more complex, harder to do. Yes. Construction layout is harder to understand and, and to achieve as opposed to having a green field out next to the highway. I, I give that to anyone. But on the flip side, from environmental reasons down to capital investment reasons to tax-based enhancements, we should be really looking and encouraging to develop in the, in the inner core out. And, and so Mr. Chair, I just wanted to highlight some of those points to you this evening as I, as I, you know, made the introduction to this, to this resolution and asked for the board's favorable recommendation without any condition. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Tim. Open up to the board. Any questions? Mr. Weber?
Yes. I'm 100% for this thing. The city can really use this. I think it's going to be a big boost as far as developing and bringing people in. I think a lot of people that are coming into this kind of an apartment development is, are not going to have cars and things like that. They're going to be using the downtown, working downtown, working the area or take a bus, access Uber, taxi. I think that's what they're really looking for in downtown now. They're looking for our entertainment and I hope that our entertainment projects that are coming through do go through because that's what we really need for the downtown. This is a great plus for the city, I think. And I hope that, you know, it goes through and I it, one of the comments I would make and just under, you know, that it does have a access for Uber or drop-off to the front door. There's access to an Uber park area or just drop-off, kiosk type of thing. The other thing, if the developer can put something on the roof for people to walk around and go on top, you know, people like to do that and look around the city and things like that. So something not, doesn't have to happen, just that's out there. And yes, I'm 100% for this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Varley?
Mr. Chair, thank you. Tim, I just had a couple of follow-up questions on the parking. I know you would, you would address that generally in your memo, but you know, given what you've said about, you know, the, the, the use in the specifically the parking being consistent with the zoning because you know, that it will be, the project will be able to leverage, you know, existing parking resources downtown. I'm just wondering if you could speak to, to two things a bit more specifically. Number one, that the School Street surface parking lot, you know, what your understanding is of sort of the current utilization of that parking lot? And then, you know, to the extent that this project will eliminate that as a parking asset, you know, to what degree do you expect this project to displace other parking resources? And do you have any concerns in terms of there being sort of a total, totally a number, a, a, a sufficient number of spots?
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
So, thank, thank you. The simple answer is, is I am not concerned about displacement. I am not concerned about a loss of parking. We have more than enough parking in and around this general area. So, so there won't be any, any level of concern for any of the abutters or anyone in the downtown that they won't be quote-unquote parking. Will you need to change your mindset of where the parking is? Are we going to need to manage it differently? Yes, definitely. But the parking, to answer your, your, your first part of your, your question, how is the parking used? You know, I, I can't tell you an occupancy level. Off the top of my head, I can tell you it only generates somewhere in the order of magnitude of like 20 ish to $25,000 a year in revenue, which is not a lot for 84 spaces in our highest, you know, rate area. We typically see the parking lot used. It's used by the abutters. There's, there's no question. It's empty, you know, a lot of the times. And it's just really people getting a comfort level to go to one of our other parking assets. Whether that, and, and by the way, those parking assets are all in the same close walkable proximity as, as this parking asset. It's just, it's going to be laid out differently. Without question, in New England, we have a strong affection for having what's called line of sight for parking. It's the reason why, you know, when you go to a shopping mall, oftentimes you walk further from where you would otherwise when it comes to parking. But you see the door. You can, you know that there's an end, there's an end site for, for the walk and it, and psychologically it gives you comfort. When you're in a downtown, you're not able to provide that, but I assure you, you'll have closer parking access in a downtown like Nashville than you would out by the Pheasant Lane Mall using one of their, one of their parking lots. You just would need to go to the garage or one of the other surface parking lots in the general proximity of, of where you are. At, at any rate, Mr. Chair, I hope that answers the question.
Yeah, and just, Mr. Chair, one follow-up if I could. So specifically in, do you have a sense of, of, of what will be available in the High Street Park and Garage specifically? There was a, a reference to it. We had a memo from Attorney Westgate suggesting that there would specifically be usage for this project in the High Street Garage. So I was just wondering if you could comment on that?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. So one of the things that I think is, is failed to be recognized. And one of the reasons why this project makes a lot of sense is this is a complimentary use. So your daytime usage of parking occupancy is at a certain level. And there's no question, the High Street Garage is used during the day. At nighttime though, it's actually the exact opposite. It is almost virtually empty. When is parking used at the most in a, in a residential development? At night. When is, when is a hotel need its parking? At night. So those types of comple- 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 complimentary uses are the exact reasons why we were looking to backfill this develop, this type of development in this areas because we knew it wouldn't exacerbate that daytime demand. And so to answer your question, the evening occupancy of of the High Street Garage, and I actually, it's in your slide deck, which, you know, you can, you can reference if, if you wanted some point. But we did a, we did a study of it over the, over the months of January and just to check to make sure we were still on the right track. And, you know, on average, it was only getting a quarter used at night. So you're, you're, you're well, you're you're well within reason to have plenty of occupancy for when the, for when the cars would be there.
Okay, Mr. Varley?
And so does that mean the, the spots then, if, for example, there were spots, as you're saying, that the apartments would use the spots at night, so they, they wouldn't necessarily be exclusive spots, so people could use them during the day? And then residents of the apartment can use them at night?
All right, if they wanted to pay for them. Yeah, if they wanted to pay for a leased spot during the day and if they wanted to, you know, they would be entitled to that. If they wanted to pay for a leased spot at night, they would be entitled to that. And that would be no different than any of the other abutters. If they wanted to pay for, for, you know, that exclusive use that you just referenced during the day, happy to afford them that, that, that right as well, that ability. We do it all the time.
Great. Other questions or comments from the board?
Mr. Chair?
Yeah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a couple of, of comments. And the first one honestly is going to sound like a little bit of a broken record from earlier. It, it's difficult to process this information when we're receiving such large document drops the day of the meeting. We just received Mr. Cummings' correspondence today. Attorney Westgate submitted a, a pretty substantial letter to the board today as well. This was continued from our previous meeting, so I don't understand why we're folks obviously knew about this ahead of time. So again, it's hard to digest and I feel like I'm being put at a disadvantage trying to absorb this. That being said, based on the memorandum that we did receive prior to our last meeting, at which this, this agenda item was tabled, I'll just note for, for comment's sake, it looks like the lot intends to be sold for $900,000, but the city is effectively going to give back $100,000 in engineering fees. My general question would be, why not just sell the parcel for $800,000 and work out the engineering agreement on, on your own? I don't know that that necessarily has to be included in an actual piece, purchase and sale agreement. I'll put that out there for, for anyone that cares to answer it or, or not. The other thing I do want to point out, and I think this is an important one, and I'm sure other members of the board probably picked up on this. I'm looking at page six of the memorandum from, from Donna Graham last week. Specifically, item 2.5. The development plan is still subject to the city's land use and development approval process. So even if we grant a favorable So even if we grant a favorable recommendation or unfavorable, as I read this and if someone, someone can correct me if I'm wrong, they still have to go through site plan approval process. So we're not physically approving the this project tonight. I think that would be premature, especially given the fact that there's clearly some some discussion about parking. And I would imagine, I know he can't be here tonight. It seemed like from his correspondence, at least though Mr. Westgate has some concerns about parking. And I imagine during the normal site plan approval process, he will have, you know, the the full opportunity to to address that. So I think those were were my primary items that I that I wanted to bring up. I'm not on its face, and again, I can't address specific site plan issues tonight, nor would I try to. But I did just want to make that 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 distinction between giving a favorable recommendation back to the Board of Alderman versus, you know, this is this is not site plan approval tonight. And that's 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 what I have. Mr. Chair, thank you for the time. I appreciate it.
Yeah, you're correct. Yeah, this is not the 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 actual development would have to come through a site plan approval process, just like every other one. Mr. Peterson, I know you had a chat question you asked. Do you want to jump in?
Yes, this is Michael Peterson, 11 Delaware Road, Nashua. I'm speaking as a resident of Nashua. Today, the board received a letter from Attorney Westgate regarding concerns from the Harbor Homes. And is there anybody who's going to address Attorney Westgate's issues in front of our board tonight? And that's my question.
Okay. What do you want to talk on that? Tim, did you have you seen that letter that was?
Yes, I have seen that letter.
Okay.
I can just state Attorney Westgate specifically said he was not going to be here tonight. This letter is was was sent to your attention. This is a recommendation that the Board of Aldermen sends to you per the NROs, which simply requires the planning board to give a recommendation of some kind to the board before they take on any sale of land or leases. Mr. Ballinger was correct that a full site plan application will need to come before you as part of this process. And at that time, parking and many other items will absolutely be addressed by the board. Does that help to clarify?
Speaking for myself, the answer is yes.
Okay. Mr. Tim, did you have a comment or?
No, no, I'm good. Thank you.
Mr. Hudson?
Yep. So similar to Bob, I received the packet today. I did I did instead of receiving the information for the table meeting because it was mailed to my office and I've been working remotely. So I this is the first I've seen it today, I came in 12:30 today. So I feel unprepared to make any kind of recommendation. I don't I'm not in opposition to the project at all. I understand the need for housing and understand the assertion that there's plenty of parking. But I for one will be abstaining and looking forward to, you know, the detailed plan review when it comes forward.
Great, thanks, Steph. Any other comments from the board or questions of the city?
So I, if I may, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I just I just want to say for the record, I understand that maybe the packet didn't come in until till more recently. I think that might be, you know, for the newer members of this board, a concern. As the chair had referenced, this is not a new issue, something that we've been addressing over the years. And, you know, this this so shouldn't be a surprise that this that this was coming coming forward. And one that I think most people recognize, my office has been working on for the last three or four years. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Other comments or questions from the board? I don't know. Does anybody? Go ahead, London, did you have?
Yeah, I just wanted to add one thing. I know that Chris actually sent these out yesterday via mail because I got it yesterday. Did everybody not actually receive it till today? Because we did send it out yesterday.
I got it yesterday.
Okay.
Yeah, I think different times.
Okay.
No, I got it today. I got it at 12:29 PM today.
I got faster email.
And is there any, is there anybody else on the line that isn't part of the city or who has already spoke or the board that wishes to comment? I know that all the people on, I have a question. Mr. Hudson?
Yep. I want to correct the record. I apologize. I did receive it yesterday. I just I did not have an opportunity to review it.
Okay.
I do see I did receive it yesterday as indicated.
Okay. Ms. Harper?
I just wanted to ask a quick question. When when we we're looking at projects like this to develop, further develop the downtown, are we looking for, I know we're looking for housing, but are we looking for more multi-use projects where they where housing and more local services are provided so that people may not necessarily need a vehicle?
If I may, Mr. Chair?
Sure, go ahead, Tim.
Thank you. Yes, that's always our preference is to try to incorporate mixed use vertical development as much as possible. It can't always be accomplished based on, you know, where a site is. You know, it's based on many different factors. One of them being is some street conditions won't allow for that mixed use type of environment that that you you know, you try to strive for other, you know. And then, you know, so it really depends on the streetscape that you're looking to 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 achieve. Not every single streetscape will have a mixed use component to it. But for the most part, as a whole, yes, we should try to have mixed use type of development in a downtown as a as a good rule of thumb.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
I would just like to state, I appreciate the efforts of staff. If this has been an ongoing project for many years, we literally just got this yesterday. So again, disadvantaged for us. I would like to echo Mr. Hudson's statement. I don't feel like I've had the opportunity to properly review Mr. Cummings' correspondence or or Attorney Bennett's correspondence. So in all likelihood, I'm going to abstain from this vote. It does not mean that I'm not in favor, whatever happens through the site plan, site plan review process. It just feels it feels like tonight we got caught off guard a little bit, or at least I did. Again, I won't speak for the board. This was tabled from a previous meeting and I don't understand why these materials could not be submitted in advance, other than the day before the meeting. And I think that would hold that's not specific to this project, it's just in general. And I understand we're dealing with things remote now and folks don't have physical access to paper necessarily. But just trying to to do your due diligence as a board member, if you do not have the materials in front of you to review prior to our meeting, what are we supposed to do? And you don't have to answer, that's a that's a rhetorical. I'm just stating, there is a little bit of frustration tonight. So be that as it may, that's basically what I wanted to say. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, my address said very briefly?
Sure, Mr. Mayor, go ahead.
Yes, well, Mr. Ballinger is correct. Ideally, the board should be receiving materials earlier. On Mr. Cummings' side of it, I can tell you that he has been working 100% of the time on trying to reconstitute the main street and close two travel lanes, communicate with all the downtown businesses, take in all their concerns, hold multiple readings with as many as 60 downtown participants, all remotely, and has developed a plan to expand the dining space in the outdoor into the street, one lane in each direction. A plan that in the end was adopted to tonight by the Board of Alderman unanimously. So I actually think that you would have received it. I'm not discounting anything that's been said. But in Mr. Cummings' defense, I just want to say that he's been working 100% of the time, you know, more than 40 hours a week on this other thing. So he didn't get to write this memo till later than than he normally would have under more normal non-COVID-19 circumstances.
Okay.
So we'll we'll make sure that that happens better in the future. But there were a lot of mitigating circumstances.
Okay, understood. All right, any other comments or anybody want to make a motion regarding the referral?
Weber?
Weber, go ahead.
I'd like to make favorable recommendation to the Board of Aldermen on resolution R20-028, authorizing the city of Nashua to enter in a master agreement with Lansing Melbourne Group LLC.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table to make a favorable referral. Do we have a second on that? Okay, Mr. Chair. Second by Mr. Hirsch. Any further discussion? Okay, let's make a roll vote.
Mayor Donches?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
I'm going to abstain.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Abstain.
And Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes 6 to 0.
Okay, thanks. Next up, I have on the agenda for other business referral from the Board of Aldermen. I propose R20-033, authorizing the mayor to execute a confirmatory deed to Penachuck Water Works.
Mr. Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Barley.
I'm going to recuse myself from this discussion, please.
Okay, understood. All right. Mr. Mayor, or is there anybody from the city that wants to just speak on this resolution?
Mr. Chair, since I'm sitting as a board member, Ms. Marshall can discuss the details.
Okay. You're muted. There you go.
Good evening. Thank you. I I actually, sorry to say that I thought that Director Cummings was staying on to talk about this, but he just had to go over to the Board of Alderman meeting. So I am not ready to speak on this, I'm sorry to say. It is essentially, the Penachuck is, sorry.
Yeah, this is the land on Harrison Ferry?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I think I can, I think I can at least, no one else is, they want to, they will, I.
Attorney Donches, excuse me, Mayor Donches, Nick Frasca from Frasca and Frasca on behalf of Penachuck.
Perfect. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Frasca.
Yes, Mr. Frasca, that's what that's what I was looking for. I was going to say, I know there's somebody here for Penachuck on behalf. So thank you, Mr. Frasca.
Absolutely. So we're looking to resolve an issue with respect to some property out behind Penachuck Junior High School. This is property that was taken for taxes back in 1961 by the city. Penachuck Water Works has has owned the property for years in the eyes of the city. Penachuck's been paying taxes on the property for as long as anyone can remember. And the city assessor actually shows the property as being owned by Penachuck. The lot in question has actually been consolidated with with other lots in that same vicinity. And those lots together all constitute Tax Map 52 Lot 49. And that consolidation was done back in 2001. The issue is is the fact that there's a missing deed. No one can find the deed conveying the property from the city to Penachuck. We've scoured the registry of deeds and it can't be found. So the request is for the city to execute a confirmatory deed to replace the missing deed, convey the property to the Penachuck Water Works and to to clean up the title.
Okay. It was pretty straightforward. And anybody on the board have any further questions on that?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Yes, I just want to thank Attorney Frasca for for clarifying which which lot and parcel that is. I was just reading the deed and it's kind of a confusing deed. Harris Road isn't there anymore. And you're citing a plan from 1897. And I think I finally located this on the City's GIS website. Looks like those are all paper streets that are referenced in that plan. But as you just noted, Lot 5249, that that at least seems to make sense. So I think that was that was my primary point of confusion, honestly, where precisely this was. So I do appreciate your your explanation on that matter. And that's, I just wanted to put that out there, Mr. Chair. I don't know if if with the with the conveyance, if there's any opportunity to to clear up the deed, if that's even necessary with regard to specific lot and parcel descriptions. But thank you, thank you, though regardless, for the clarification.
Okay.
Certainly. I have worked with corporate counsel, Attorney Bolton, in drafting the deed. The deed does reference the lot consolidation. I know it's it's confusing because we're referencing a very old plan, an 1897 plan. But that's the lot in question that actually has to be conveyed in order to to clear up the title. I tried to make it a little clearer by referencing the consolidation, the lot consolidation with with respect to Lot 5249.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair, if if I may.
Sure, go ahead, Mr. Ballinger.
Thank you. Yeah, Attorney Frasca, no, I appreciate that explanation. Again, I could have completely missed it. I just don't see a reference to the to the new lot number or the existing lot number, as it were, 5249, at least in the bracket that we received. I I could be mistaken, but I just I just wanted to point that out.
Sure.
Okay. Appreciate that, Mr. Ballinger. Any other comments? Anybody want to make a motion regarding this referral? Weber?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Make a favorable recommendation to resolution R20-033, authorizing the mayor to execute a confirmatory deed to Penachuck Water Works.
Okay, so we have that motion for a favorable recommendation on this referral. Do we have a second on that?
Second, Mr. Chair?
Second by Mr. Ballinger. Any further discussion? Are we going to roll vote on that?
Mayor Donches?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes.
Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes 7 to 0.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
All right, thanks. And so we have other business number four listed. And just for everyone's clarification, that's going to be postponed to our May 28 special meeting. It's five o'clock on the 28th.
I'll send that reminder.
What, yeah, you'll send that. And just just for clarification for everybody on the on the line, the reasoning the reason we're postponing that is to get the required number of, of days of public notice, essentially?
Correct.
Okay.
For publication in the newspaper, yes.
All right, okay. All right. That's all we have on the agenda. Does anybody have any other discussion item?
I just, Weber?
Weber, go ahead.
Uh, I just wanted to ask um if that's possible to go out and if um Linda or Scott can go over and uh to investigate whether that property on the green metals will have a regional impact on us. I believe that uh traffic-wise, um, they're going to be coming just per load after, after truckload. They're not going to be going through Hudson. They're going to be coming across and going on the freeway and they could be on a lot of stuff. So um, just thought that it is regional because it does impact our roads. Your comment.
Okay. Okay, are there any other discussion items on the board? Not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay. We have a motion by, we have a motion by Mr. Riley to adjourn with a second by Mr. Hirsch.
Can I? Don't eat this, thank you.
I know, can we get a roll vote on that, please?
Mayor Donches?
Yes.
Scott Leclerc?
Yes.
Adam Barley?
Yes.
Ed Weber?
Yes. Yes.
Ed, Dan Hudson?
Yes.
Maggie Harper?
Yes.
Bob Ballinger?
Yes.
And Larry Hirsch?
Yes.
And that motion passes eight to zero.
Okay, and we are adjourned at uh nine fifty-one. I appreciate everybody's patience and uh we'll see you uh twenty-eighth.
Thank you for your patience.